Need approval for one of those. Same thing we all done.
I usually print mine out at home. Most of those on that.
I need long guess?
Yes, she is. Thank you.
You're welcome. No, living there all. In your box, I'll put it in your box.
He's talking, thank for we've just signed up over here.
Well, that's on your committee today. Because I think.
Well, that's true.
Do you turn it in?
I turn it, I take the roll call.
I know Mr. Matt, I'm not Mr. Matt. I don't know. You want to get paid me as my pet?
But is that a beautiful? She can leave. You have two options. We technically isn't be every year. It's gonna take longer. More important. That's basically.
Hey, listen up guys. Six thirty time called order eleven city council meeting for August eleventh twenty twenty five. Roll call please.
Belkey, Eric Bennett. Cornish.
Here.
Pharaoh.
Here.
Marsakowski.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
And Washington.
Here.
Please join me for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now the motion to approve the. Roll call.
Cornish.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Marsakowski.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yeah.
Washington.
Here.
And Belkey.
Yes.
Yeah, read this, uh, plan commission, they have no meeting in August, they will meet September fourth at six thirty at the Lebanon grade school for public hearing. Now we'll move on to audience. Uh, hey Sharon.
Come in and pass some stuff out.
Yeah, come on, give us your name again. Guess five minutes.
Yeah, Sharon Gile. Um. There are three parts for each person, thank you, to include calling you cause that. There actually should be one package for. Thanks. Okay. Um, Sharon Gile, on the fourteenth of October twenty four, I provided inputs using this same ordinance that I'm passing out. Then various derived from a search on our words historic district within the city ordinances. Last week, George mentioned potentially looking into becoming a certified local government with respect to enforcement of historic preservation laws. I also passed out a summary of the program from the state historic preservation office for Shifal's website that includes the one page summary of the program. And list nearby communities that have certified programs. Note under requirements on the last page. That this, um, you have to have a historic preservation ordinance that can be approved by the Shipo. I wanted to highlight a disconnect I've mentioned numerous times within the current Lebanon ordinances. Note in the very first paragraph of section thirty six seven twenty. Where it's defining the historic shopping district. That this area is effectively equated with the area that in the last sentence of that paragraph. Talks about the district that's listed on the national register in nineteen seventy eight. I also passed around a diagram. That shows in blue. The outline of the, of the federally listed district to which federal and state laws apply. This whole big area. And also includes the outlines of the historic shopping district in black. This little tiny area here, notice. Very, very different entities. Okay, it's fine to create the historic shopping district. The problem is that the two very different entities are conflated throughout the ordinances and many people don't even realize that they aren't synonymous. As discussed previously, there are also a number of other misleading and or erroneous statements within the current ordinances. On the next page of the ordinances. It talks about issuance of certificates of appropriateness, which is done by the plan. This is great, but also note that through the rest of that section, it talks about the historic shopping district. When it should refer to the federally listed district. And the plan commission be knowledgeable about what the Shipo considers to be significant, otherwise known as important. Aspects of relevant buildings and use cases. A main selling point of this town is its historic character. Important to being able to promote it, to attract tourists is maintaining this character. It would go a long way if the ordinances were corrected. And the plan commission certificates of appropriateness were aligned with the state and federal. Law and priorities. I'm likely messing up the pronunciation of his name, but is Darius. Brika, okay. Very serious. Said last week, he's very willing to come to Lebanon. Pretty much whatever time the Shipo can help with ideas to maintain the historic significance. And architectural details and ease transit by everyone around town, you just need to ask. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, Ron, come up, tell us who you are.
I just got a couple of comments on the special use permit, it's going to be considered tonight. For two eighteen North Herman Street. I've been to all the hearings on this thing, um, over. Past several years, this is the renewal of an existing special use permit that I was at all the hearings for that. I've been involved at all this, so I. I have been involved, uh, Jan Channel has also been all these meetings. For and I were both not in favor of this, by the way, which didn't seem to mean. Um, one of the things I want to find out is in looking at this thing, I don't know if anybody's added up to adding this up. That we're talking potential for eight total of eight horses, eight cows. Dirty chickens and eighteen goats on the property. That's a lot in my opinion, we're not talking horse, we're not talking a couple of goats. I don't know, uh, I'm sure it's gonna pass. But, uh. I see ramifications, problems, I was raised on a farm. I moved to town to get away from hounds, thank you, my stock cow. I lived next to this property. Um. When George Baum had cows down there when I was a kid. Different time, different world then. Smell was not always nice. The truth, but that was a different time. Just wanted to remind everybody of that, um. The other thing is, I'm not saying I'm gonna do this, I own a lot across the street. From this, um, some kind of, um. Center in, um. Got to make a lot there, it's not doing anything, if my tenant decides she wants to raise goats there. Are you gonna let me do that? I'm not saying I'm gonna, but you have to be prepared for that kind of thing to come up, but once you'll start this. And you open the door. Special use permit. Uh, I realize it's case by case. I could use this, I'm not going to, somebody could. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to all the persons. Everybody good today? Amber?
I would like to say something. I have been absent from some of our weekly city. Call meetings here in Lebanon, and I appreciate your patience and understanding. And twice. Twenty oh seven, I made history as the first black woman boil maker in Southern Illinois. When I first joined local three sixty three, the experience was daunting, although some members extended a warm welcome. Others attempted to intimidate me into quitting. These, those years were among the toughest of my life, yet I remain steadfast in my determination. I faced racism, harassment, verbal and physical abuse and a hostile work environment. But I chose not to give up. By embracing God's love and guidance, I was empowered to make the difference in many lives. Through prayer, I sought change and breakthroughs for myself and other women who might pursue careers in construction. My grandmother's words of wisdom often reminded me to be cautious about my prayers as they may indeed be answered. I prayed for peace and was granted not only peace, but also a promotion. As my work situation improved dramatically, I was again blessed with the position of alderman in Lebanon. A town I love very dearly. This role enables me to contribute to my community's betterment and advocate for those desiring change. Currently serving in this position and helping others in my utmost priority. I'm sorry. Currently serving in this position and helping others is my utmost priority. I made promises to the people of Lebanon that I would serve on this board to the best of my abilities. And I intend to keep those promises. A few months ago, I was approached with a request to work. A three week night shift, although I hadn't worked night shift in years, I accepted the task due to the day shift being fully staffed. And the temporary nature of the assignment. During the initial two weeks, I struggled to stay with the job site and I attempted to rest during the day. I made a conscious effort to adapt to my new environment, giving my lifelong habit of sleeping at night. Ultimately, I was successful, the final week of my assignment was manageable, but it required some time to adjust. However, just as I adjusted to the night shift, the job ended. It took an additional two weeks for me to revert to my natural sleep pattern and avoid. Daytime fatigue while spending time with my children. What I'm trying to say is that I'm currently adapting to an eighteen year answered prayer and my new role as alderman for this town. I want to assure you that despite taking longer than two weeks. I am fully committed and I promise to meet all of your expectations of me. Please, I kindly request your patience, thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, RJ? Yep, um, I would like to, uh, first off apologize for the absence that I've been, um, gone, I've been. Work emergencies and then also some much needed family time, so I want to apologize for that. Um, but, um, as I've gotten back, uh, I want to check in on the. The lights downtown has been brought to my attention, uh, more than once, uh, with the rope lighting. Uh, downtown with them on all year, um, and why, you know, we have Christmas lights on in August. Um, I, I. We've had several, um, people who live downtown, uh, asked and begged and plead. Uh, to have these lights turn off, they're not part of our infrastructure, they're part of. They were supposed to be, from my understanding, a part of the Christmas, uh. Deal, um, and it's way past Christmas, um, and so I don't understand why they're still on, neither do the residents who live down there. Um. And I really think we should get these things turned off, I mean. It's August. And we have Christmas lights on still. Um. So I'd like some feedback possibly from you guys, if you guys feel the same way. Uh, I've heard that the Chamber of Commerce or whatever they. Own them, but they're running off of our power and we're paying for the power. And also, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce, I mean, from my understanding, they. You know, raise money to, you know, beautify downtown and all that kind of stuff and like set up events and things like that, but I, I mean, they don't, I don't think they dictate on. When. Lights are on and off and all that kind of stuff, I feel like we do. Um. So the people been living there have been asking. For a long time and have gone on deaf ears and it's been brought to my attention several times. And yet we still have these Christmas lights on. Um, so I, I mean, I really think we should push to. I mean, we should just turn them off, I mean, we're the elected officials, um, and our constituents are the ones who are. Begging and asking politely to turn off the Christmas lights. So, um. I don't know, whatever you guys think, I honestly think we need to turn them off, they're, half of them are working, half of them are not, they look, in my opinion, they look very tacky. Um, they don't go with the historic part of Lebanon, I don't think at all. Uh, maybe for the Christmas time, you know, great, but, um. All year round, it's. It looks normal, in my opinion. The, the LED rope lighting that.
They changed the name to building lights rather than Christmas lights.
But they're Christmas lights and that's what they were into, that's what, when they raised the money, from my understanding, when they raised the money, they, they were, um, telling people that it was for the new. Christmas lights for the, uh, holiday, the, um.
Victorian.
Thank you, the Victorian holiday. Um, and then that has now such change, the chambers like, well, no, we're gonna keep them on all year, is what it sounds like. But they shouldn't dictate what happens downtown in our, uh, in our sort of district down here.
So, I, so I'm gonna cut you off because technically this is. By bringing this up, it should be put on the committee's agenda, it needing, you cannot.
No, I'm not asking for a vote tonight, but I would like though, like.
Yeah, I think it's better for you guys to put it on a committee agenda, so you can all discuss it, it gives the public notice that this is gonna be an item that's discussed and then from that. Discussion, then you can revert, revert back to the council for an official action.
I mean. Well. They were, I mean, originally intended to be Christmas lights, right, and but we still have them on, so I don't, and. It's running off of our pa, the city's power, from my understanding, is that right, Cody? Are we paying for it?
I would have to look at the bill, I'd be lying if I spoke on this matter right now.
Okay.
They're on each building separately, the only ones that the city pays for is this building.
Okay. So either way though, it's the cities downtown, um, and they were intention, they're originally purchased for the. Christmas stuff and, um.
Maybe, uh. You and America get together. And meet with some of the people that have strung those around.
Yeah.
And, and talk to them.
Well, I, I don't think though, they really, I mean, if, if we. I mean, we, we were the elected officials to dictate what goes on, right, downtown, I mean.
The difficulty is that if they're on, if they're privately owned and they're plugged into private. Buildings, so we probably cannot dictate anything other than. Potentially the implementation of a, some, basically a light fusion type of.
Right, yeah.
Dance or something.
Well, then let's do at least of that, I mean, it looks, I mean, if, if, if I were to, um, get like a petition or whatever, sign. From people in the area that vote and all that kind of stuff, whether, I mean, because the intention from the get go was for Christmas. But now they have it like a Las Vegas thing, kind of thing, is what they got going on now. Um, and it's, it's, and they're on all night long and it's. I mean, me and I'm sure none of you guys would appreciate, you know, having lights blaring into your window at night when they're not even. Supposed to really be there in the first place or on in the first place, I mean, we didn't pass them to have those lights on all year round, did we? I mean, and they're not part of our infrastructure, they're personal, you know, like you said, it's not our infrastructure lights.
The problem is, yeah. My concern is, is that the council can't tell these business owners to turn off these lights anymore than technically anybody. Could leave up their Christmas lights year round and.
Right, sure, but, but the fact that we're in the historic district here and this is like the historic part, just like how she's brought up all this stuff. It sounds like there's a whole laundry list of stuff that we could go through that is in violation of what we got going on, I mean, we're trying to attract people to our town. But when you drive by here and it's August, we got Christmas lights up still, it looks really bad.
Yeah, George?
First of all, the chamber owns those. Just to clarify, they own the license, chamber made the decision since they represent. The businesses in this area. Uh, they're the ones who request that they be turned on. And. My third point is that I don't think we can tell them anything. Because they've got, they've discussed this. Forever and ever and ever, and the city does not pay for the power except for this building. And it's minimal because they're Allen Dean, it's minimal use. But we're not talking a lot of money for, for the city, but I don't, I, I. I can see it both ways. And we cannot really call them Christmas lights ourselves because we're a public body. They are decorative lighting for this, for the setting, for the historic district, and there are many historic districts. In the state and, uh, in the country in general that have this type of lining. If a person chooses, my opinion, this is my opinion, if a person chooses to have a residence in a business district, then. They choose to have a residence in a business district and what the business district does, it does. That's, that's the issue.
Not, I think that's.
For years.
I mean, for them to be on from. Nighttime till six o'clock in the morning is.
They should be timed to go off at eleven.
Well, they're nine.
That's, well, that's, that's the issue, that's the issue that has been brought up with the chamber.
Well, I just, I mean, I just feel like, my personal opinion, I think they're very.
Let's discuss it and.
Hold, hold your thought till it's your turn because you're getting on all the. Can anyone else, any other older person?
In the, uh. Oh, the old person?
Yeah.
Yeah. He, uh. You know, my background is, uh. Banking and whatnot.
Yeah.
And it has for nine, for like forty something years, and I was wondering if I could become part of this, uh. This, um, finance committee. Since I, I made my living doing that. And if it's too, too much, why? Did you put me on there for a look see and watch it and then I'll get off it?
I, I think it's one thing we need to wait for committee to, I don't know, well Luke, what do you think Luke? Something needs to be discussed?
I'm not sure I understand because the city went to committees of a poll, so every one of you is a member of the finance committee, just the same as every one of you.
Right.
Is the number of every one of the other committees.
It was, and Mike happens to be the chairman.
Correct, so you have a chairman, but everybody else is a number that's. City has gone to, it's not like. Other committees where you have a two or three person number committee. So. I'm not sure.
Well, the question is, is that, uh. There's Charlie, there's Mike, and there's, uh. Uh, lady. And, uh, I've been in the banking business for forty five years. And I'd like to take a look at it, I might be able to shine some light on it. And I feel like, uh, if it's all gonna be just. That way.
He's talking, he's talking about the bank proposals.
The problem is, is that that's technically part of. The treasurer's purview with the mayor as the chief executive. And then they would report back to the committees and the council, that would not be, it's not like it's a subcommittee or a directive of the council to do those things. So they're, they as officers are doing this thing. So there's not a, there's not a something to be appointed to because you can't be both a council member and an officer.
Say that again, please.
You, you, you can't be both an officer and a council member. So they're, what they're doing with that is, is as officers. Not as members of the council, so. That's why you can't be. Appointed to, I mean, they can obviously, they can.
They can do anything they want.
Well, no, the code has directives as to what their powers and what they are tasked to do as those officers. Whether it be the treasurer, the clerk or the mayor. Yeah. I'm not sure I've answered the question.
I say, I want to step in here, I think what he's talking about is he, he has the background in banking, so he thinks he should be. In Mike's position, whereas RJ over here. Is cemetery and he has a background currently, I mean, not besides military, he works for I dot and basically what, what would be considered water resource, right?
Sure.
So therefore he. If you go by experience, should be, who's, should be in your position. And you. Whatever.
The chairs of the committee are appointed by the mayor.
That's.
The mayor probably reserves that right to.
That's true, I just said, I haven't changed anything since I've been mayor, I did appoint Mike for finance, so because that's where, that's where I was sitting before they came, before I came here. So since.
I'm not looking to. Um. Cause any here with Mike, you know.
I understand, but you understand what, what Luke was saying though, right?
So I guess the, the thing that mayor you could do at this point is you could have individual conversations with each of the council members. About whether or not they would like to be. Be reassigned to a different, as chair of a different committee than what they are. Be reassigned to a different as chair of a different committee than what they are. And then you could potentially about that to change the.
What I'm saying about doing that is ask each individual. What preference they had, whether, you know, whether they sit down versus whether they would like to sit or if they're okay with where they're sitting correctly. Alright, um, anyone else? Linda?
Yeah, um, we've been, um. I've been talking about all this, um. The weeds and grass, overgrown grass and stuff. And I don't understand how. We wouldn't expect the residents residents to keep. Their yards looking nice. When the city's not doing that. Um. I just.
Yeah, see something, Miss Washington, about that part?
Let her finish.
Sure, my apologies, go ahead.
Um, I just passed the resident's house and along the digits. It's really, really long, and I do not expect ninety year old people to get out there and do digits. So I do think, I know at one time we were talking about residents maintaining land. The new way. But I don't think at ninety. They should be out, they should do that, they should.
And I didn't, Cody heard that, he'll probably be saying something later on. Thanks, Trent.
Miss Washington, I know with like the state and stuff, like we're held by like different guidelines with like rolling a lot. Uh, like certain times, uh, because of like the butterflies and the bees and all that kind of stuff or whatever, they they. We have to where we can only mow like a fifteen foot swipe and then only certain areas can be mowed out and the state dictates. I know this is different for the city, but I know for like our state right of ways, like I like I don't know, four and things like that, um. That's all done by them and they can only do so, they only do so much and sometimes it's silly beyond. Anything, in my personal opinion, but. Um, that's why a lot of the times the state uh right of ways are so tall. Is because one, they're behind in spraying and can't control weeds and things like that, and then two, they're only allowed to mow. So many times a year, um, because of things that have been passed to protect. Different insects and things.
Yeah, I I understand that, but um, I don't think that has anything to do with this city.
No, I but sorry, and I shouldn't have cut you off in the first place, my apologies, sorry. I'll stop.
You you done, Linda? Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports, uh, streets and alleys, Sean.
Uh, just like we were talking about, I brought up last week with the Lions Club. On Friday, Saturday, October tenth and eleventh, from seven AM to six PM, they're gonna be handing out candy. Just like they've been doing for the past couple of years. I take it I just need to bring this up for, I need a motion to get this approved for the. Same thing they've been doing for many years. The intersections, if you wanna know, are McAllister and South Madison, the four-way stop at Casey's. And West St. Louis and Monroe to four-way right here at the police department. So I guess I'm asking for the motion on behalf of the Lions Club so they can do their candy day.
Can you make a motion now?
I'm making a motion.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call please.
Barrow.
Yes.
Marzakowski.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Stevenson. Washington.
Yes.
Belkey.
Yes.
Cornish.
Yes.
Okay, move on to finance, Mike?
Uh, nothing urgent, we move a week for unite. Six thirty.
Okay, ordinance, George?
Uh, we meet on Tuesday, September second at six thirty, remember that's Tuesday because Monday is Labor Day. Um. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance and running the special use permit with conditions. To any pop to keep horses along with cows, chickens, and goats in the SR three, several family residential district. At two eighteen North Herman Street.
Maybe need a second? Hey, Jordan, I got a question on you.
Got a second for you to talk.
Oh, my man. Second. Is there, he had brought up about like how many animals and things like that, um. Is there a type like ordinance, I I know in some areas they have an ordinance on how many animals right have and so many um acres and all that kind of stuff?
I can answer that question. First of all, the ordinance only refers to the previous. Ordinance that approved that did not have the previous ordinance that did have numbers in there. But there were a limitation on numbers, so there is a limitation on numbers in that ordinance. And I don't believe that it's the full count for every animal, it's, I think it was livestock total.
No, so there's not of the original ordinances. Neither the one that was originally that expired or the new one, neither of those had a maximum number of animals. I know when he was here and talked about it, there was a discussion about a maximum number, but in looking at. Two of those, um, both the chickens and the goats. Had a number allowance higher than what he thought the maximum capacity was. So that didn't quite make sense why it would say you could have thirty chickens but only have a total of a maximum of seventeen people. So, um. Based upon the what it was presented, that they wanted it consistent with the others. I added eight horses based upon, so there was. They put up having eight cows, that was where I thought it made the most sense as far as that. Obviously, if you guys don't agree with that, you can. You can decline it and send it back to me to change that or do something like that. But at this point, we we have to send it back to the planning commission if we wanted them to to make a recommendation as to a maximum number. Of. It's all the next stop, because that was never in anything that I had seen.
So basically this new one doesn't have a maximum number, they could put a hundred dinosaurs on there if they wanted to.
No, the maximum they could have would be, um.
That's what will be in this new one if we say yes.
The total maximum, if they ma- they would, if they could max out each of the. Or per animal, so that would be eight horses, eight cows, thirty chickens and eighteen. Goats would be the ma- like the total maximum they could have. But as it stands right now, the maximum they can have is the. Cows, thirty chickens and the eighteen cows, so the only difference with. With this one is adding in the horses, which is what the regulation was.
RJ, it's thirty two point eight acres, it's not like it's your backyard.
Right, right, and that's what I was wanting to ask, like, does the animals actually have enough space? Because I know there's a lot of, you know, activists out there that would, you know. Pretty upset, and you know, the animals didn't have. A lot of room that they're supposed to have, whatever it is, I don't know, I'm just asking because um, I think maybe that's something we should think about too. Um. I don't, I don't know, I don't know what, I'm I'm not a farmer.
I'm gonna make a stupid comment, so a lot of it's in the in the bloodline out there, so maybe they're expecting, uh. You know, another, maybe another, another arc or something, they're getting all ready.
Uh, I'm sorry, I couldn't say that, um.
Well, you sure don't wanna make it open ended.
Right.
The the difficulty is is that the original. The special use permit that's already been approved, that was approved. In the last and was renewed, did not have that maximum in it either. So it's not like we're passing one. Got you now that doesn't have maximum ever had, the maximum just said. Per animal, the maximum. So it never said the total number of animals you could have is, you know, thirty or twenty or whatever, because. And it already said they could have nothing, they're chickens, so.
Yeah. Because I I've heard that like, you need like five acres for one cow or something like that or something, I I I don't know, but. It was something along the lines, there was supposed to be like so many acres for for like each animal, uh. Anyways, I'm just told the discussion out there.
There's probably a state law, I haven't researched.
Yeah, the difficulty is just that there's a lot of variables in there because. You could, you know, whether you're talking about. Which kind of cattle you're talking about, meat production. You know, dairy production.
Yeah.
Are you talking about? Terrible horses are you talking about, you know? You know, just your traditional riding horses, are you talking about, you know, the Anheuser Busch. Giant horse, you know, so there's a lot that you can't. Like, we can't dictate those things at this point, um, so. I just prepared this ordinance based on what was referred to me at the last meeting.
Good, hey, Paul has something to say?
The one thing is they bought the land in nineteen, two thousand nineteen. Completed construction around two thousand twenty one. The home is for sale. The home is sale pending now. So. It's gonna be a new game when it goes to closing. And that's up to the planning commission, up to you guys, you got the numbers, but. It's, I say it's fair to assume that she's really not gonna do too much relevant to adding horses and cows and. On thirty two point oh eight acres.
But I think you try to stay like, I agree.
And if it changes hands, we're gonna.
She's got, she got nowhere to put the animals in the first, I mean, that's.
I know where else to put these animals right now, but apparently they're moving, right?
Right, and what Mike said, I heard him say this, so when they go to closing, whenever it happens. It's it's done. Fresh start, so that's up to the planning commission, in the meantime, ordinance meets September whatever second. And you can start working on, just in general, not for that property, for the whole city. You know, to control how many horses or cows or whatever.
Yeah. Um. You know, they don't too, like when they're, if they're selling this house and these other people were getting purchase, I mean, you're in real estate, right? I mean, if the other person is like, hey, well, heck, they got all these animals here, this is hurting by this place and put all our, all our.
That's what you're saying, it doesn't transfer.
Okay, but that's on them to let them know like, hey, this doesn't transfer over.
That's why this whole thing's becoming kind of weird.
Yeah.
Yes, because it does not transfer, that's a state thing, special uses do not transfer, they would need a variance for it to be able to transfer to a new buyer. So they're gonna have to come through plan and go through the whole process again, no matter who buys it.
Any more discussion about that? Okay, roll call, Paul?
Marzakowski.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yeah.
Washington. Delkey.
Yes.
Cornish.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes. Okay, move on to water sewer pass.
Not that I know of.
Thank you, when you make that, next time.
I don't know, I have to take a look. Fifteen.
Okay, thank you, sir, uh, cemetery RJ?
I got a big question on the on the water and sewer, and Penny, how's how's your, um, where you at? So there you are, I s- I heard one of the guys had gotten uh burned. Uh, then how's he doing? Good. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to check on, you know, see if.
Anything for cemetery?
Cemetery, no, sir, we are meeting, um. Yeah, on September second, uh, but we're gonna be talking about the uh. Stuff that Paul has brought to the table with the probing and all that kind of stuff and uh, working out the fees and things like that and all of that. Uh, the next, uh. Sorry. So, um, people will call until I get um, areas probed or whatever, right? And um, it's usually a free thing that uh, we do. Um, but he's been having issues with people having it done and then nothing. Normally they do that to then um, set up a burial and all that kind of stuff, so we're gonna um, start charging ones. Starting people or discuss about charging people um, to do that if they are not. Um, having a funeral within.
Within about thirty days.
Yeah. Because otherwise they're sending these guys out and they're having, taking time away from, you know, mowing or whatever else it is. That they're, that they got going on to go and probe these sites. And um, we're taking, doing it for free, and so this will be towards, uh. To to do that, so. But that's, that's all, yeah.
That is, hey, health extension.
Have we heard back from MetStar?
I have not, I did send an email to MetStar with the proposed drafts and some explanations of those things. Um, but I have not received a response from them. As to their willingness to do those changes or any other feedback as to the contract.
Anything else on it?
No, and our next, um, meeting is August eighteenth.
Okay, property, Amber?
Uh, I don't have anything, uh, our next meeting is Tuesday, September the second, twenty twenty five at six thirty PM.
Hey, personnel, Mr. Bennett's not here. We don't got nothing there. Uh, work, Paul.
So, just to reiterate what RJ said, is Cody and the guys, June was probing month apparently because. Seven times in one week. They got calls to go probe. And not one of those, and I'm not belittling the question or inquiry, was not for burial, just want to know where. They just wanted to know where somebody was or whatever, so. It's common when there's a burial to probe automatically. But I I believe the estimated fee is just fifty dollars we're looking at, but uh, it's something that seven times in one week. And I don't, it was hot, I know you guys were getting tired of it, and I was almost blamed. So the biggest thing is, is what can we do to rectify people? From just randomly calling, and I understand what they're looking at and what they wanna know, but. Things aren't gonna change until that moment when they really need to probe.
What it covers is, is um, it's fifty five dollars an hour to have two guys out there probing. And when it's really hot, we have a no working alone policy, because if someone falls out, nobody's around, that's not good, um, so. Uh, Penny actually was the one that got that policy started, so thank you for that. Um, with that being said, two guys out there, for those seven probes, we spent a better half of almost nineteen hours. Looking for urns or what have you, or they couldn't remember if it was an urn or cremation. And it was a, well, can you find them and tell me how big the the urn is? And then once we found it, it's like, okay, is someone else coming? I was just curious how big it was. So we spent hours out here probing to find out that they were just curious how large. Grandma or grandpa or whoever, again, not trying to sound rude, but we do have to refute that co-. Excuse me, that cost, because at fifty five dollars an hour for two people to be standing out there, the cemetery does get paid out different than. Uh, streets and alleys, so when we do work work in the cemetery, we write down cemetery hours. And it doesn't really generate a ton of money, it's not a money-making thing we do.
Well, can we ask the reason?
We do, and that's where the probe fee comes in, if you're having a funeral.
Do it.
Correct, so before Paul gets it now, and Paul has a great setup, uh, I don't wanna take away from that. Is the first question is, is the probing for enough to be a funeral, or is it for just a personal reason? And if you say personal reason, that's when we would say it's X amount of dollars for us to go probe this. And uh, we'll probably put a cap on time because uh, these graves, you, when you buy one plot, it's two side by side. And if we're going back. Twenty five, thirty years.
We're gonna be hearing all this when we discuss it as the council. So can we save all the details until that point?
Sure, yeah, I wouldn't wanna waste time.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
I don't know. Yeah, go ahead.
What, whatever happened to, um. Where do we stand with? Illinois?
The register.
All of that kind of stuff?
So I had a. A couple of meetings with the state of Illinois, and as of now, they're in the midst of changing the act- actual name on the license. And uh, taking off a name and and. We're gonna have a new license, so we're ready to go probably in the next thirty days. And it should, it's good through the end of August of two thousand twenty eight, so as of right now, it's a, it's a positive. Things are in the system clearly, I am going to speak to Luanne. And see what the information she needs to bring in the stuff and we'll get it all put together, and we're on the right track.
So you're, you'll be able to get all the items?
I'm gonna be able to get that. Um, yeah, yeah. And uh, it is put in the system too, so. A few, few of the funerals are a little bit tough, yeah.
Can we bury now?
Not yet, we gotta wait for that license to be in my hands by the IDFPR, and I wanna wait for that to be printed and in my hands. So. We can't sell lots from the city's standpoint, we can still do funerals with already purchased lots. Or individuals that own lots that sell their own. We can still do funerals with already purchased lots or individuals that own lots that sell their own. So we're.
But we can't sell.
Correct. And we've not been able to before I got on board. So it's just gonna be less than thirty days. Should be less than thirty days.
They're all bought?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anything else?
Uh, just giving you guys an update. We received, um, six letter of intents, uh, from some, six different banks that are gonna be submitting proposals. I know one of them has already contacted me that they're gonna withdraw. Um, so we should see five proposals submitted this week. Um, they have until Wednesday. I believe it's four, what time do you go? It's four thirty, four o'clock. So it's Wednesday at four o'clock that those have to be turned in. So we should be getting five. Um, I have, the other banks have sent their questions. I responded to all of them, so everything's moving along. Um, and I'll have more information for you for our finance committee on Monday. That's it.
Hey, Luke, you got anything?
Um, the only thing I have is the, I did prepare a draft of the ordinance um, to vacate that they worked. That was something that had been brought up almost a year ago now. Um, I sent it to Charlie, I sent it to George with their input. I've also sent it to the property owners for them to review. So it is my hope that that will be ready for you guys to discuss and then we'll meet in next week. Um, or hopefully referral for the, the meeting the following week. Um, so that that issue can be finally resolved. So that was the only thing I still have tearing over.
Oh, yeah, okay. Now it's my turn, so I got, I got a few things to read here. Uh, these kind of talking points, uh, got a creep site update. Economic incentive agreement, uh, between the city of Creepside with the city and city and Creepside has been finalized and signed. Check to Lydigan, who was a plumber out there, was sent out Friday. I'm gonna address, uh, public misconceptions. There have been several misunderstandings circulating regarding the city's role in the Creepside project. I'd like to take a moment to clarify a few of those, uh, key points. Number one is sewer access. The city cannot block or prevent Creepside from assessing uh, the sewer. The delay stems from their request for financial assistance and subsequent need to secure approval from I D. Tiff districting, uh, funding. There's currently no Tiff district in the Creepside area. Without a Tiff in place, we had limited options for legally providing financial support. This situation highlights the importance of having Tiff districts established ahead of time. So we're in a better position to assist businesses with development costs in the future. Communication with owners. The city's limited communication with Creepside, Creepside was not due to unwillingness. Following a public meeting where one of Creepside's owners announced they have retained legal counsel and threatened litigation against the city, who were required to communicate through their attorney. This is the standard legal protocol and was done in good faith to protect all parties involved. Streetlight concerns. The city did not deny Creepside a streetlight. The proposed location falls on private property and would impact on I dot, on an I dot road. Both of which are outside our jurisdiction. We did, however, contact Ameren on their behalf and confirmed that the lighting uh, proposal provided to Creepside was valid regardless of whether it was requested by the city or by Creepside directly. Ameren is good at working with, with businesses. Final thoughts. We're pleased that the city was ultimately able to provide financial assistance to help Creepside open its doors. We wish them continued success and encourage everyone in the community to support their business that they haven't had a chance to visit yet. Now we'll go into flooding concerns and proposed solution. Terrifying recent statements. At a recent public meeting, Alderman Farrell mentioned the idea of creating a special taxing district as a potential solution to address flooding issues in the Roger Drive and McHenry Park area. Since then, we've received several calls and messages from concerned residents who are understandably upset by the suggestion. Want to make it clear that the proposal was not discussed with me or reviewed by City Hall prior to being mentioned publicly. I sincerely apologize to anyone who may have been alarmed or led to believe this idea is currently being implemented. It is not. City's long-term approach. We have a dedicated team at the city actively working on long-time, long-term solutions to addressing flooding across the community without raising or implementing new taxes. These challenges have developed over many years. And while they will take time to resolve, we are committed to doing the work thoroughly. Our goal is to create sustainable solutions that won't simply push the problem onto future generations. Collaboration with McHenry University. I'm pleased to share that we recently had a very productive meeting with leadership from McHenry University. I appreciate their willingness to sit down with us to address shared concerns related to stormwater management and flooding. By combining our resources and working efforts, we're confident we can make meaningful progress more efficiently and quicker. Commitment to a solution. I have full confidence in our team that is actively working to address stormwater and flooding concerns across the city. We're fully committed to finding effective, long-term solutions that relieve the burden on residents in every neighborhood. This is not something we're planning to ignore or simply discuss without action. We're moving to work, we're moving forward with this pur- with purpose. As progress is made, we will continue to make the public informed, keep the public informed uh, over every step, step along the way. An update on the six eighteen ink. Happy to share that six eighteen ink, that's the tattooed parlor, uh, will be floating on the old Chevy's pizza building down there this week. Renovation work on the property will begin shortly, and we're looking forward to seeing new light brought to this space. We're happy to welcome six eighteen ink eleven. And that's it for me. So we'll move on to partner heads. Chief's not here. Uh, Cody?
I wanna start off touching on the, uh, lights out here. Christmas lights, whatever we call them. The majority of the lights, if you actually look out, there are plugins that run off of a city poll, which is funded by city money. Uh, I was made aware of this a couple of minutes ago earlier. There are some that are plugged into buildings. I don't know how those are paid for. But I do know at least four plus this building, so five, come off of city money. With that being said, I've been here for five years, very short five years. My problem that I have with these lights is we're using three-way plugins to attach to another plugin to plug everything in. It looks bad. It's not done right. And I've been asking to address it for a long time. I understand we want to have something uptown, but just throwing something together and looking terrible with tape and extension cords does not help the business district. So if we can come to a solution, also with the globe lights to piggyback off of, they're not ran right either. I understand they were donated. I understand it's a sore subject for some people because their families paid good money. But the wires shoved between cracks in the sidewalk and a year and a half ago, the department took on the project of putting conduit in to get ground wires to these also. Uh, we've noticed since we've switched to LED, which require good ground wires, that we're burning through bulbs at least three hundred dollars a year in bulbs, and we're getting maybe a year out of them. So there is a proposal out. We are taking them down and refurbishing them. It's at slow pace. We haven't removed one. We're four months behind schedule. Uh, Rain will do that to you. To piggyback into the next issue here about cutting ditches. Uh, I was actually discussing this with the attorney tonight. We're gonna go a little bit farther into it just to kind of brush on it. As of right now, a rideaway in front of your house is still a part of your house. Rideaway means we can work on the property. We can maintain the ditch. And I understand about a ninety-year-old, I get that. I wouldn't want my ninety-year-old grandfather out there either. The problem that we come down to is if I do it for him, I do it for everybody. There's twenty-seven linear miles of road. You wanna break that down into bigger numbers, we're looking at fifty-four miles of ditches that we're gonna have to cut. We already have complaints that we can't keep up because of the cemetery. We shouldn't have taken it in house. So now imagine four guys, fifty-four miles of road, and we're mowing the ditches. Won't happen. Or you just cause ditches and easements because we will not do roadwork. We will not have time to do anything else. And it's very expensive to keep up with it. That's the only answer I have for that right now. That might change. Depends on how we ride the ordinance. But as of right now, if the weeds are tall, a, a letter could be written. And you, you get your ticket or your warrant, and then if we cut it, you get your.
I'm sorry.
That's just, I understand. I didn't make the process. I just follow what you guys have.
You brought up last year, we shared this year.
I did.
It was ridiculous.
We need clarity.
Ridiculous now.
Well, to piggyback off the rest of it, I dot does mow certain amounts. On route four, we try to maintain as much as we can with the water grass and everything else. Our excavator is down there now. We mowed around the, uh, bend. We try to make it presentable, but we can only mow roughly about two times a year also. Uh, it's hard to get out in front of this, especially with twenty-one inches of rain in July. See what else we got here. Think that's pretty much all of that.
Did, did you finish the cemetery thing a long ago?
No, I didn't want to waste time. George pointed out, that's so, don't want to waste my five minutes here. Uh, I think that's all I have. The ordinance, so we have no ordinance prohibiting us cutting multiple times a year like I dot. Uh, again, that's because butterflies, uh, milkweed, because monarch butterflies feed off of milkweed. If we're being specific for species, I think it's kind of a cool idea if you think about it. If we had milkweed in town, uh, we don't. And then, uh, so the only other thing I have is, uh, we're trying to move through and, and make things happen. I did get a letter about not sweeping or two. And then trying to fill potholes and not cutting grass. Uh, we're still gonna cut the grass. We're still gonna sweep because before we cold patch, we have to sweep. If we put cold patch above the dirt, you might as well throw the cold patch in the ditch. It won't stick. Uh, be patient with us. We are working towards getting stuff done. It's just remember, uh, streets and alleys, we're the smallest budget with the biggest problems, so. Just remember that. I mean, eighteen thousand dollars to fix roads, sidewalks, trees, and anything else. We can just plan to do it, but we'll never get anything done. So I really, really want you guys to buckle down and look at the budget. Because in the next, I wouldn't quote me on this, but I'd say in the next sixteen months, roads are gonna be horrible. Sidewalks can't even walk on, and that's been since I was going to high school. And now that I'm here, I wanted to make that change, but I can't make a change. You throw me a nickel and give me a million dollar bribe. So we gotta have something. I don't know where we're gonna get it from. But review what we're spending on. Probably we can, but we had almost a hundred grand just in trees. And I'm not gonna knock trees because they're dead. Kids are walking to school on them. It's not okay. So.
That, that hundred thousand you're talking about was fifty times, uh, larger than what it was when we came all the way.
Well, when I first got here, for reference, it was a twenty-seven hundred dollar budget for tree removal. If anyone's ever cut a tree down, that's trimming it. Sidewalks was like two hundred and fifty bucks. And it was a continuous problem. Um, so for the people at home, we're trying, we're making the difference. We're hammering away at the budget. Jessica's doing a great job at that. Uh, we're just realizing that we have to make changes to get it going, and it shouldn't be at the taxpayers' expense. That's all I have.
Kenny, you got anything?
The only thing I wanted to mention is that the repairs have been made in McHenry Park. Remember, we had a contractor, uh, backed out on that project. I mean, uh, we actually, uh, got that for and did that work, uh, this past week. And it was up to honey, working low, but hopefully it will come to now in operation. And as I mentioned earlier, Tom released, come back work today, but that's good news.
That it? Okay. Unfinished business?
Here.
Okay.
No, you still, you, you already answered the six eighteen, so I know.
Okay.
That's done. Uh, what about, uh, Lamar? Is, is he still looking to over there? You say no, okay. All right, I just try to, people come in and they wanna talk about it and everything else. And then it kind of goes away and like, what happened? So, okay.
That it?
Yes.
Anybody else unfinished business? Okay, uh, new business. Nobody? Need a motion to adjourn? Move adjourned, boys, bro.
I mean, I can go through the roll.
Well, no, boys, I just said.
Everybody good? Well, whoever stays here, I'm gonna say they, they.
I don't know.